I hereby call to order the November 29, 2018, special meeting of the Palm Springs City Council. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. City Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Holstich?
Present.
Councilmember Coors?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Roberts?
Present.
Mayor Moon?
Present.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cocken, would you please give a report of the closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, we had a closed session that continued after the meeting, Mr. Mayor, and we did report out after that closed session that during that closed session, we had the opportunity to review several additional agenda items with no reportable action. We continued our closed session as we said we would at 5:00 this evening, and in the course of that closed session, there was some reportable action. The first thing that I will report is that one of the items upon which we're reporting was added as a late item to the agenda. It was added because scooters showed up in Palm Springs less than 72 hours before the posting of the agenda, and the law allows the council, if there's an urgent matter, to add that item to the agenda. The council made a 5-0 finding that it was urgent and that it came to the attention of the city within that requisite timeframe. So the council did take action with respect to Bird Scooters, and I'm going to read the council's statement. Bird Scooters will not be allowed to operate in the city of Palm Springs until the community has a chance to weigh in. The city council met in closed session tonight and directed the city attorney to notify Bird Scooters that the company must cease and desist operations in the city of Palm Springs within 24 hours and remove all scooters until the city has an opportunity to consult the community on this issue. If Bird Scooters fails to comply, the city manager has been directed by council to confiscate and store the scooters as expeditiously as possible under the city's existing ordinances. That concludes my report on that matter. The city council did discuss RoboLights last night and did conclude its closed session consideration of a draft RoboLights settlement in closed session this evening. That settlement is, at this point, executed by the other parties. It will be executed by the city, I trust, tomorrow. It is now a matter of public record. There have been some reports and discussion in the news, but the substance on a big item level is that RoboLights obviously is happening this year pursuant to certain terms and conditions of a permit that are part of the settlement, and RoboLights event, the holiday event that the city has grown accustomed to through the past several years, will no longer be taking place on Gran Via Valmonte as it has at any point in time in the future. There will be a future site for RoboLights. In the city of Palm Springs, it can only be located no less than a quarter of a mile from any residentially zoned area. The city is helping to fund the relocation of RoboLights, and that funding is in the amount of $125,000, which will be payable to Mr. Irwin and the trust that own the property within 10 days of execution of the settlement. And there will be accountability regarding that money, that $125,000. The city's requirement that RoboLights no longer be at that location is enforced by significant liquidated damages provisions, and the capacity of the trust and Mr. Irwin to make good on those liquidated damages is ensured by the settlement's form. That's going to conclude my report of closed session for this evening, and that's it.
Okay, one question. When will that contract be made available to the public?
Because I had been asked by two media outlets to provide it, I've already sent a copy of it to two media outlets. If there's a break tonight, I can make copies available to the public that's here if they want them.
But you've already released it.
I've already made it available.
You want to make a point that it is available to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Dr. Reddy, you will be putting out a press release on this. Okay, so that gets all the information out there to people on this subject. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cocken. Next item is, "Public hearings provide direction regarding draft maps for voting district boundaries for a city council district-based electoral system pursuant to election codes section Before I open this to public comments, I want to give a couple of directions here. Before our meeting started this evening, I received, we all received, some copies of some testimony that people intend to give this evening. I'd like to point out tonight that this public hearing is strictly regarding draft maps for voting district boundaries. No other subject related to the CVRA is allowed to be discussed under the rules of our meeting procedures. We will be having a meeting, the final meeting, to pass the ordinance will be on December 19th. That meeting will definitely be taking place. At that time, anything is open for discussion, anything regarding four districts, five districts, the election of the mayor, anything people want to discuss that evening can be discussed. Also, we will be having one additional meeting on the entire CVRA prior to the 19th, maybe the 10th. We're going to be discussing schedules tonight before this meeting is over. People will know when that other meeting is. So there will be two meetings where people have the opportunity to say anything they want about what we've been doing on the California Voting Rights Act. However, tonight is a very limited agenda, only on selecting a map. And I know people are very passionate about this, and they have a lot of things they want to say. However, I will be very strict, and if anyone goes off of that subject, I will ask you to stop and to sit down. So only discussions on the maps we're discussing tonight will be allowed. Okay, I want to make sure that's public, that's totally clear. Okay, our speakers this evening? I don't see any yet, Mr. Mahia. Whoa, now I see some. Our first speaker is Jim Franklin, followed by David Friedman and Tony Aguilar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Jim Franklin. I'm here representing the Palm Springs Regional Association of Realtors. My fellow colleagues are not here tonight because I'm missing two big holiday parties to be here, but we felt it was very important to come and give our concerns because Council Member Middleton, Council Member Coors came to our meeting yesterday. We had over 100 Realtors in attendance, and at the end, we voted on the map that we thought would be the best one, and that is the Middleton Test 6B D2/D3 swap. And one of the main reasons that we like this map was because it had split compared to the other one, five, the bottom one, into four and five. And I know it's not up on the screen, I have it here, but that was our feeling, and I would, on behalf of my fellow Realtors, I would like to say that we would like to see this one adopted for the next election. And I know there are concerns about incumbents, but, you know, none of you were incumbents, and you all got elected, you know, so, hey, it's not that big of a deal. So, thank you very much. And did I stray off the message?
You were right.
Okay, I'm not going to talk about smoke inspections.
And I'm glad you didn't bring up smoke.
And you didn't bring up smoke alarms, thank you. The next one is David Friedman, followed by Tony Aguilar, and then Norm King.
Good evening, Mayor Moon, Mayor Protem Roberts, and council members. My name is David Friedman, and I am a resident of the Indian Canyon's neighborhood. Like many other community members, I have been deeply involved in the districting process, submitting maps and comments, and attending many community forums and all but one of your public hearings, which I watched from my hotel room when I was out of state. I joined Mr. Franklin and the Realtors Association in supporting Middleton Test Map 6B. It does exactly what I requested in my public comment at your November 15 meeting, the email I sent the city clerk the next day and Councilmember Holstich last week, which are in the public record, by combining the best features of Mr. Crawford's map for districts 1 to 3 and the Middleton Test 5 map for districts 4 and 5. This Middleton Test Map 6B correctly divides hillside and golf course neighborhoods in South Palm Springs based on their predominant land use and socioeconomic features, natural boundaries and traffic patterns, and thus ensures that all districts in the city are drawn to reflect their community of interest in line with Supreme Court precedent and council's statement of principles. For the record, and contrary to incorrect press allegations, dividing districts along sunrise between Ramona and East Palm Canyon is not done to protect incumbents. This boundary is in many of the maps that I and other community members submitted in response to the request for community input and thus reflects our own views of community interest. It is also in three of the four maps recommended by the CVRA Working Group and seven of the eight NDC maps, your own demographer. On the city's districting page, it is stated that the city's desire to ensure that the, it is the city's desire to ensure that the proposed districts reflect prevalent communities of interest. The Middleton Test 6B map achieves that goal. Please respect the community of interest views of many of us who live in South Palm Springs and adopt this map. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Next speaker is Tony Aguilar, followed by Norm King, and then Frank Tyson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little confused here. Last Wednesday, Norm King and I had a meeting with the city manager, the city attorney, and we were assured by them that we could speak about this item at this meeting and any future meeting.
Mr. Aguilar, I'm sorry. It's always a rule that during public hearings, people can only speak on the subject of that public hearing, which tonight is only the draft maps. On the 19th of December, I'm sorry if you got received incorrect information or misunderstood the information, however, on the 19th of December is when the council will vote on this ordinance and final, and you can speak on any subject related to it on that evening. And there will be one meeting before then, probably on the 9th of December, we'll decide that tonight. But tonight, unfortunately, and I'm sorry, you cannot speak on anything except the map. I'm sorry, Mr. Aguilar.
It's all right. The other thing is, the city attorney promised us that that meeting, that he would be in touch with the state.
Mr. Aguilar, I'm sorry, you strayed off of the subject. You may not continue speaking on this.
You know what? This is just not right. We show up to talk.
Mr. Aguilar, I'm sorry, you can speak on any of the five, any of the maps that are...
A lot of work has gone into our presentation tonight.
Mr. Aguilar, you can come back on the 10th and the 19th, but I'm sorry you have to sit down.
Nice happy hour, I'm missing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. The next speaker is Norm King, followed by Frank Tyson, then Judy Deetrack.
Again, I've been assured that I could speak. I will speak to the council choosing either the Crawford map modified or the Crawford map 1, and I will speak to what you should do with it, which is put it to the vote of the people. This is a continuation of what you did not let Tony say, even though we were told we could say it. In 2015, when a mini-code 3486, upon which the city is relying, the Senate Office of Floor Analysis placed this comment on the record.
Mr. I'm sorry, sir. Mr. King, you've strayed off the subject. You can only, I know you said something about the maps, but that's all you can do this evening. I'm sorry, you'll have to come back on the 10th and the 19th.
I would actually let the city manager relate the discussion we had twice in the last week.
Mr. King, that is not on the agenda. I'm sorry. I understand you want to speak about this, but unfortunately, based on our rules, you cannot do that.
Mr. Mayor, I sent you a copy, what I'd be providing, and if you'd taken the time to read it, you could have called me and said, "Don't waste your time," because...
Mr. King, I'm sorry. Based upon what we have here this evening, you can only speak on the voting district boundaries of the maps.
We'll at least read what we filed with you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, in the discussions we had, obviously, we tried to accommodate what people want to make of comments. It was clarified in closed session today what people could and could not speak about, so if there was any miscommunication, we apologize. But again, it was clarified in closed session, and that's how you're proceeding.
I'd like to add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that as you correctly stated, there will be at least two more opportunities when the council will be considering Voting Rights Act matters, when anything related to what the city is proposing to do regarding districting will be fair and reasonable topic for as much discussion as the council hears.
Right, and to segue under what you said tonight, the city council in closed session did discuss and voted unanimously that because the public will have two opportunities in the future to speak on anything related to CVRA, tonight, we must strictly go by the rules and only allow a discussion of what's on the agenda, which is the maps. Okay, that's enough said tonight. I don't want to talk about this anymore, and I'd like to ask nobody to come up here and speak on anything but the maps, or if you do, I'll ask you to sit down. Okay, the next speaker is Frank Tyson. Okay, after Mr. Tyson, Judy Deetrack, then David Feltman, and then Kara Cotterlin.
My name is Judy Deetrack. I have a question of the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I am asking you a question. I would like you to submit it to the city attorney.
I am not permitted to respond to questions during public comments, just, Deetrack, I'm sorry.
Then what I would like to ask, a point of clarification, is if I have a question about your jurisdiction to act tonight, are you able to respond to that? Am I able to discuss that on the record? Or is the city attorney saying that that is not part of my right to speak tonight?
It's not a matter of rights, Mr. Deetrack. It's a matter of the procedure and the rules, and the rules are that during a public hearing, and we say this every week during city council meetings, people may only speak on the item that's on the public hearing.
If I have a question about your jurisdiction to have the meeting tonight...
Mr. Deetrack, you may speak on any of these maps that are on the agenda tonight, but that's, the public comments are limited to that subject only.
Then I've got to assume that you're denying me the right to speak on the issue of your jurisdiction to act tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add for the record, I'm not precisely sure of what Ms. Deetrack is saying when she says the city council's jurisdiction to act. She could be speaking about a wide number of things. The council's been clear, the council wants to hear during public comment about the item that has been noticed for this hearing. That's the council's determination.
Correct, and we always make it very, and I'd like to make it very clear that during these, during these public comments, the council does not normally, except under extraordinary circumstances, respond. What the council will do is, after we've heard all of the public comments from all the residents who wish to speak, afterwards, during our discussion, city council members will address those subjects that they heard from the public that they feel need to be addressed further. We do not address each speaker as they speak, so that's our standard procedure that we've always followed. Okay, sorry for the delay, sir. David Feltman?
I'm going to make this boring and speak about the maps. I'm David Feltman from South Palm Springs. The reason I'm here is I... The reason I'm here is I saw in a certain media outlet that the subcommittee had decided only to move forward on one particular map, which was the Crawford map. I'm just telling you what I read in a media outlet. I'm not saying what it, if it was accurate, not accurate. I'm just saying what I read. And that concerns me. As I understand it, the goal of creating council districts is to ensure full representation on the council of minority communities who have gone unrepresented in the council for too long, and I support these efforts to be more inclusive. However, something has gone askew. The way this unfolded in the past few weeks, it suddenly became acceptable to force Lisa Middleton and Kristi Holstich into one district, even though the vast number of maps that were presented had them in separate districts. I love Palm Springs precisely because we have progressive values and there is room at the table for everyone. Lisa has been a skilled neighborhood advocate, a public servant in the truest sense, and is transgender. She represents the best of what we need here in Palm Springs. Kristi Holstich is a lawyer, a fierce advocate for the disenfranchised, and a millennial bisexual woman. She too represents the best of what we need here in Palm Springs. So why are we in a place where the council is considering placing two women in the same district when it makes complete sense from a neighborhood integrity and diversity perspective to place them in separate districts? We had one woman and four men on this council for 14 years, and now we have a more diverse, if not fully diverse, council. Yet because of some irrational pressure, you're going to undo that? Have some backbone, people, and let's adopt District 1 from the Crawford map, which we know the virtues of that map, and tighten up some of the neighborhoods in the south end and place Kristi and Lisa in separate districts. This can easily be accomplished by adopting the Middleton Test 6B map from October 18th. Let's make the outcome of an addition of diversity to the council and not an exercise that adds diversity on one hand, but eliminates diversity on the other. This isn't a zero-sum game.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Kara Cotterlin, and then Paula Auburn, and Fiona Foyston.
My name is Ken Catterlin. I am the former chair of Oasis Del Sol. I am here to advocate for Middleton 5 and 6A, actually. One of the things I'm concerned about with the Dietrich map as it's currently presented is that it, while it does an excellent job of representing the minorities on the north and the east of Palm Springs, it does not, it spreads then wealth across all the other neighborhoods. So those of us that are of not substantial means end up getting priced out of the elections. What these two maps do is they maintain the integrity of some neighborhoods like Vista Chino Coalition, and they concentrate wealth in the southern and western side of the city, which keeps people from being able to buy elections across the rest of the districts. This is important to those of us who don't have the wealth to buy an election. This is an important thing that's missed in some of the other maps. So maintaining neighborhood integrity, like for Vista Chino Coalition, which does a lot of great work for my own neighborhood and for others, and concentrating that wealth, which these two maps do, 5 and 6A, is extremely important to a lot of us who aren't wealthy people. So I would encourage you to look at those two maps in particular that keep neighborhood, active neighborhoods together and keep wealth together as well. I think that's something that's been missed. I don't care about what council members sit in what districts. That's not important to me. If it puts people against each other, that's fine, but--
Thank you, Ms. Cotterlin. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Auburn, then Fiona Foyston, and then Jerry Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Paula Auburn. I am the past chair of the Sunrise Vista Chino Neighborhood Coalition. And while we like the Middleton map very much, it separates our neighborhood into two districts, and that we are opposed to. You may not know this, but you probably do. In 1929-- It's going to be a long night-- Tavis Rogers brought 15 horses down into Palm Springs and started what was called Rogers Ranch Club. It became highly successful, very famous. The stables across the street were one of the premier stables in Palm Springs at that We are currently researching our historical roots. We are going back to our historical roots. We're going to go through a name change to become Rogers Ranch. If you split us into two districts, you split history into two districts, and we would like to remain together as a single district. It would not take very much of a change in the current map, the Middleton map, to accomplish that. The original swimming pool from Rogers Ranch Club is currently at Ranch Club. The stables were where Sagewood is now. Sagewood was the first Wexler-designed condominium project. So we're very proud of our history. We're going back to our historical roots. We'd like your help in keeping us together as a historical unit and work with us as we go through our name change. Other individuals and residents are here with me this evening, and they will probably share with you a couple of the other reasons that we would like to stay together. I would like to thank Lisa very much for meeting with the neighborhood organizations and for taking the time for allowing so much public input. You're more than welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Auburn. Your time's up. Thank you. I'm sorry, would you repeat, what's the name, what's the current name of the neighborhood?
Current name is Sunrise Vista Chino, and we're going to change to Rogers Ranch Club.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Next speaker is Fiona Foyston, then Jerry Cruz, then Bruce Hoban.
Hi. I am the vice chair of the Sunrise Vista Chino Neighborhood, and I am on the side that's being split from the majority. And I hope that you don't vote that way. Our side has Desert AIDS Project and the apartments behind it, and it will also include the 60 new apartments that they're planning to be just south of DAP. Now, we are all lower and middle-income people. The rest of the area that we've been put into in the Middleton Test 6A is upper, middle and upper, and mostly upper. And we get along real well the way we are. We have a lot in common, and we have met for several years and have a lot going on. If you put us with the other group, we're not going to fit. And so we're just asking to be allowed to stay as we are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foyston. Next speaker is Jerry Cruz, and Bruce Hoban, and John McCoy.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Cruz, and I am the rep for Sunrise Vista Chino Neighborhood Coalition. I would just like to let you know that we do include, we are middle-income, and we do have low-income housing, which are the Vista Sunrise Apartments. And with the new addition of the 60 apartments that go in on that plot of land at the DAP complex, that will be included in our, I'm sorry, they will be included in our coalition. And we would really like to stay together because we have a history. Paula was the person who took, I think, everything by the reins in the beginning. She has been doing this for a long time. She kind of cornered me, and I got involved. And as you two said today, this is like you've become addicted to it. I love what I'm doing, and I love working with all of these people. So please reconsider what you would do with our neighborhood, because we would really like to stay together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. The next speaker is Bruce Hoban, then John McCoy, then Edwin Ramorin. And I believe Mr. Ramorin is the last person who's requested to speak. If anyone else wishes to speak, please put a card in to the city clerk, Mr. Mahia, at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I am Bruce Hoban, a resident of Sunrise Park Neighborhood. I'd like to express my support for Middleton Map 6B. That map was submitted on October 18th, and public comments for or against this map have had ample time to be expressed. 6B meets the criteria for establishing the best minority-majority district by following the boundaries of both Dieter Crawford maps for District 1. 6B eliminates the bridge between Historic Tennis Club and the east side of the neighborhoods. 6B creates five districts that include all sections of Palm Canyon, parts in each district, so that council members balance both the needs of our residential and our business communities. Most important to me, though, is the ability for voters to retain incumbents on the city council should they wish to reelect members. Experience on this council counts, since the learning curve for being a successful person in this town is very, very steep, as all of you well know. Council turnover is inevitable, but it should not be forced when possible. One council member has already stated they're not going to seek reelection. Two live too close to each other, that they're forced into the same district. So that's two incumbents we're going to lose in the next election cycle. There is no incumbent in District 1, so at some point, we will have a new council member there unless somebody wishes to move. The Crawford map forces the two remaining incumbents, Holstich and Middleton, to run against each other. This causes the loss of a fourth incumbent now. This is avoidable in Test Map 6, which separates 4 and 5 along Sunrise. Again, experience counts, and it's the voters and not the maps that should be allowed to choose between road-tested experience and new council members. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hoban. Next speaker is John McCoy, and then Edwin Ramorin.
I'm John McCoy, and first I'll start out by saying thank you for the process. Thank you for the staff, everything that you've done. The meetings were amazing. There was a lot of work that went into this, and I had people, friends, who liked to talk government. They would never show up at anything. I got them out to these meetings. This was city involvement. That is good government, and, you know, I want to say thank you first for that. I'd like to say I support the Middleton Test Map 6B D2/D3 swap. I agree with what Paula Auburn stated about the neighborhood. I think there can be tweaks. There can be, you know, things that will work within neighborhoods to assist them in what their needs are. Mr. Friedman is much better versed at the demographics and other more detailed portions of it, but I think he has said that very well. I would like to say, you know, living in Andres Hills, I find our connection to the city fits in this map. Through the hillsides, through utilities, if you look underground, the water, the electricity, everything ties that direction. The Bellardo Bridge that has been put in is part of our access to downtown. When the construction project on South Palm Canyon occurs, we will be traveling through the Historic Tennis Club neighborhood on a regular basis. You know, this really is our true neighbors. As part of 1PS, those other reps from those neighborhoods, I'm currently the alternate rep, I was the rep for Andres Hills, those were the neighborhoods that we naturally gathered with. We spoke about issues, and there is that natural connection. I also, I'm a Realtor, I was at that meeting, and I was very impressed to see such a large group supporting this map. So I hope you will take that on to consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Next speaker is Edwin Ramorin, and then Dieter Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, everybody. Working group, hey. My name's Edwin. I'm so glad, I'm very happy to be here, actually, to support, actually, this process. I was up here picking up all the comments, so I'm here to support a map that continues to look at the minority-majority district in 1, which looks like it's continuing. So I'm really happy to see that this is going to go forward in terms of looking at a minority-majority district. But I want to talk about how the optics of what happened last week definitely has left a taint on what's going on here. So there's a level of how the maps can be considered being co-opted to a certain extent because, you know, the name of one author who's coming from the community as well as a council member's name, it could come off the wrong way. I'm just letting you know. Because we need to have that kind of real bridging of communities when it comes to these mapping situations. I love hearing the conversation about how people have problems with the maps in terms of the 1PS designations, which is a real level of how gentrification has been accepted without, you know, any sort of sense of what, who made those decisions, of why my neighborhood's called Demuth Park now, to be honest. That's why you say I'm from Veterans Tract, and I'm proud of that. And I want you to know that I'm here for the long haul, and I'm here to support Dieter also, because his work has been so important in this whole process. I appreciate all the hard work you've done, Dieter. All right? That's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Ramorin. Next speaker is Dieter Crawford. And Mr. Crawford will be our last speaker unless someone puts a card in posthaste to the city clerk.
All right. My name is Dieter Crawford. I live in the Desert Island Gateway Estates neighborhood. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council staff, the CVRA. I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you put in and for taking everyone's opinion and insight. Essentially, I want to support the, I'll support the modified Dieter Crawford map. Nonetheless, all the other four maps, they keep District 1 the same, so to me, that's pretty much what I want to see, is the majority-minority district. I love seeing you guys all fight. I've been reading the Desert Sun all weekend. It's funny to me, actually. But yeah, I just want to say, I want to support the modified map because it does actually create a majority-minority district with the 49% non-Hispanic white vote. So that's the one I'd like to support. And they did point out, though, that everyone is trying to move or drawing the lines for the neighborhood, so I did like to see that. I'm not sure if it was worked out in a backdoor deal. I'm not going to comment on any of that, but it was brought up. All right.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarification quickly? Or I'll bring you up later, but which modified maps? Are you saying Crawford 2 that was recommended by the subcommittee?
The Crawford 2 that was recommended by the subcommittee.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because I think all the maps have been modified a number of times, right? So, okay.
Yeah, the Crawford 2.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mahia, any additional speakers? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comments. Next, Mayor Portem Roberts.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight. This has probably been one of the most delightfully democratic processes that I've seen while serving this community, and some of the most amazing brain power that we have in this city has been working on our districting. And that's important because that's what we need right now. This will change the face of Palm Springs forever in the way that we elect our leaders and the people to take us into the future. Mayor and my colleagues, I have some concern about what I witnessed last week, and that is a very inaccurately reported story, or more importantly, an unresearched story by the Desert Sun that reported inaccurate facts and cited some accusations that were unfounded and untrue. And I know that because I was even included in it, and I'm not even on the subcommittee. So I just want to say to my colleagues on the subcommittee and on the greater subcommittee that's working on this, I don't want our work, meaning all of us, to be railroaded or changed because of inaccurate stories in the newspaper. There's nothing to defend here. I have full faith that my colleagues and the greater committee on this has done this as a completely open and honest process. I will also say that the accusation that one could protect incumbents is, it's not an accusation that holds a lot of water for me, because I'm sitting here as living proof that you cannot protect incumbents. And so, you know, we are sitting here for one moment in time on this dais, and we've been given the duty to split our-- been given the duty to split our community into districts, for better or for worse. And I can tell you, it's for better and for worse to do this job. But we're going to be gone. All of us will be gone in a matter of years, one way or another. So it really doesn't matter who sits in one district today, because that's all going to change in one year or four years, but it's all going to change. So it really doesn't matter. Having said that, we were directed by our city attorney, who did great research on this, and by our special counsel on top of that, that we hired on this issue, that incumbency can be a factor in determining the districts. So if that occurred by the city subcommittee, or, I'm sorry, the city council subcommittee or the greater subcommittee, that's okay. That's legal, and it was done with transparency and openness. My big point here is that I don't want us to change the process or eliminate possible maps because of pressure from an inaccurate story in the newspaper. It's clear to those of us who sit in these seats that regardless of what we do, we will be challenged, accusations will be made against us, misinformation will be spread about the decisions we make or the process we use. Accusations don't make it true, and in this case, that's very much true. And I just am simply asking that my colleagues and the greater subcommittee not throw out any maps simply because of false accusations or accusations that don't hold water. So I think I've made that point. Okay, and I'll leave it there for now. The last thing I want to say is, when this council met on this issue the last time, we gave very specific direction to our council subcommittee and our greater subcommittee on this to combine a number of maps that we felt best represented a good mix of districts. And I believe they were one of the Crawford maps, one of the Doobie maps, and one of the Smoke Tree maps. And I know that we got a number of combined maps, and some of them were named Middleton. And I'm very grateful that my colleague spent the time that she did to look at those maps and create something new. I wish we had had more time that that map, that the map that everybody is talking about, had more time to circulate through the community before we saw it, because we saw it the same time everybody else did. But everybody needs to understand that we're under a deadline, because it's based on a lawsuit. And so we're moving as quickly as we can, and a whole lot faster than we ever wanted to. So I don't, again, I'm going to ask for the last time, and probably the third time, to not eliminate any maps based on accusations by a newspaper where the information wasn't researched before the story went out, and I'll leave it there.
Councilman Holstidge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I first wanted to comment for the people who were here at the beginning about the public hearing. This is a public hearing item, so we have to consider testimony and only discuss that issue. So we've had over 30 public meetings to get community input. Those have been public and noticed, and we've gone to different places. So just, I know that was a little strange, and that's because of the rules about public hearing. But we do invite the whole community to come out when we've, you know, passed an ordinance on these issues, and we can all talk about that then. This is just not the right forum. We've worked really hard in this process to get public input. I think we've done probably the best job of any city ever that's done this. We have had the most meetings. We hired a consultant to do this work, to reach out to underserved and underrepresented communities, and we're walking that walk. Those are our values. We put it into our statement about our values, and we're doing that work. It's really important to us, especially because of the historical discrimination in Palm Springs, and especially because some people haven't had the opportunity to serve at this table. You know, I think that the council made a mistake last meeting. I think that we've had an excellent process. We had the world's best working group who brought us forward five maps that were chosen by the community and had a lot of community input. I'm not going to lie, I think at the last meeting, we were really tired, because we had had a long night the night before. We've been doing double meetings this whole, the last few months, just to do these separately, so we can spend as much time as possible with the community. And so I think that we made a mistake in choosing to move forward to maps, including the Middleton Test 5, that hadn't been already included and considered by the working group at that point. Just to respond, there are no backroom deals. I saw that map that, actually, night when I sat down at this table, I saw it for the first time, and I had the same reaction as some people in the community. I just hadn't wrapped my head around it. And so I actually think that we should go back a bit, back a step, and just look at those maps. My understanding, you know, and then I was really upset to see the Desert Sun coverage and some of those accusations. I've campaigned with and against Lisa Middleton for almost a year. I have served with her for a year. Lisa Middleton is highly ethical. I mean, she is above reproach in a lot of ways. She is not the person who is drawing any map for any other reason than what best serves the community. I believe Councilmember Middleton went on her own to 20 meetings, over a dozen meetings, with community neighborhood organizations to hear from them. So I think what happened at the last meeting is that we skipped a step, and we didn't explain that reasoning about why that map worked. I think what Lisa was doing, and I only know because of what happened at this public meeting, because that's where we do all the business, we're not allowed to talk about it, except in this meeting right here that you're watching. I believe what was happening is she was combining the best elements of the maps. I've continued to support the Crawford map and that District 1. I think that's incredibly important. Again, one of our, it aligns with our values of having a minority-majority district and keeping communities of interest together and keeping socioeconomic groups together. I think that's really important. I haven't decided right now what map to vote on and decide. I actually did talk to some people in South Palm Springs. I reached out, and I included all of those emails back about what South Palm Springs should look like, because I don't actually think we've had that conversation. I think we talked a lot about North Palm Springs. I think we talked a lot about District 1 and 2 and 3. I personally, I have strong feelings about this. I've lived in southwest Palm Springs. I lived at the Biltmore Colony for about three or four years, sort of right around, right across from the Ace Hotel. So that would be, you know, different and different maps. And then now, I live in Sonora Sunrise, you know. And so I wanted to hear from neighbors and South Palm Springs residents and residents about what South Palm Springs should look like. Does it move east to west? Does it move north to south? I don't, I'm not deciding based on my own view, so I have lived in those neighborhoods. I strongly believe that they move north to south based on communities of interest, like people in the community, like David Friedman, have talked about, that I actually don't drive that way. I only use feral to go up and down. I feel communities of interest in Sonora Sunrise with Los Compadres, Little Beverly Hills, Araby, that's the kind of zone that I walk my dog. And when I lived on the other side of South Palm Springs, I walked my dog in Deepwell, Talkwitz River Estates, and down that way. So I want to make sure, this is a really hard process, and it's really, really hard for us to make, get a perfect map in this, I mean, we're not going to get a perfect map for every single person. And we've actually got the longest extension ever given in this process by a few months. So we've actually, I know that the community feels rushed. I feel rushed, too. I wish I had six more months to go to every single neighborhood group and every single neighbor. I wanted to, like, walk and poll my neighbors, right? We want to hear from the community, but we do, we are facing a litigation deadline, and that's why we have to decide. So that's why, at the last meeting, I supported the Middleton Test 5 map, because it included the best elements, in my opinion, of the Crawford map with Districts 1 and 2 and the South Palm Springs maps. That were actually, I think, three out of the five maps, that were the final five picked by the working group, had different districts than this Crawford Modified 2. So, you know, I've said from the beginning, this issue about incumbency actually asked the question of our special counsel a month ago about if we're allowed to consider incumbency. I think this council has made it really clear that we're not considering incumbency at all. I personally rent in the city of Palm Springs. I am here till 2021. I don't think the people of Palm Springs or of a district or of me, I have decided whether to run again, right? And if the people would want me to represent them in a district, that's a different thing. That would be up to the people. But I don't want us to take so far the opposite. We're considering incumbency anyway if we're drawing a map that ignores it entirely, and I'm not, I don't think that we should consider it. It's just not a factor for us. But the Desert Sun spin on this issue was, I think, really detrimental, and I think it just got all of the facts wrong in a lot of ways. And that was harmful for this process, because we've had such an excellent process. Part of that was our fault in moving forward on a Middleton Map 5. I do think that Dieter Crawford has worked incredibly hard on this map and in this process, along with the working group. I would like to see a final map, you know, be named after, you know, the residents that did the input. And I would also like to see the Vista Chino, Sunrise Vista Chino neighborhood group be, if we could talk about if that can be included, I think, the subcommittee. But I, you know, I don't know if Dieter Crawford or the working group could come up and explain the thinking about South Palm Springs and that map, and if there was, I don't want to pick an arbitrary map for South Palm Springs. I really want it to be based on facts and neighborhoods. We've heard that from the community tonight. I don't know if anyone feels, or if the subcommittee would talk a bit about that at all, and I want to have that conversation.
And I do want to follow up on that before I make my comments, but first, one thing we didn't report out in a closed session, which is not a mandatory report out, was some action we took regarding information relating to the CVRA. So I don't say it wrong, can you please report out?
I will, as soon as three out of five of you tell me to do so. Because it's not a mandatory report. The council did take action in relation to the Voting Rights Act in closed session, but as Councilmember Corus said, not mandatory reporting. Does the council want me to report on that action taken?
Yes.
I'm seeing the hands go up, all five of you. Thank you. The council determined that it would, in fact, even though it's not obligated to do so, release the demographic data that it considered in deciding to proceed with the districting process. And that would be a report on a closed session item. Thank you.
And Dr. Reddy, how will you be releasing that information to the public?
I'll be asking the city attorney.
And we will be working on implementation of that as expeditiously as possible, certainly. But there's data, and we want to make sure that it's understandable in the form that we release it. So we'll be working with our demographer, and we'll be making sure that we get the information out as quickly as we can.
Hey, thank you. Councilman Corus?
Just to follow up on the mayor's comment, city attorney, whatever the date of that meeting, for the first reading of the ordinance, which is tentatively the 10th, can it be included in that staff report as well? So, because the public often will look at staff reports on these issues.
It certainly can.
Okay, thank you. I do want to follow up on Councilmember Holstidge's question about the South, because the difference between the two modified maps are only in Districts 4 and 5. They're the same for 1, 2, and 3. And so I would like to follow up, and Dieter Crawford, if you have a preference for one split for 4 and 5 versus the other, just the reasoning, so we can make sure we take that into account, would be very helpful. And if someone from the working group after, who's looked at a bunch of maps, has some thoughts on that, we welcome that. We know it's not a vote of the working group if you do. Thanks, Dieter.
Dieter Crawford, once again, I'm not really concerned about the, how the other districts are split up. Mostly concerned with the majority-minority district. Like I said, it was interesting, though, to see the incumbents. At first, they were all in, it was two districts, and then all of a sudden, it's four districts. That was interesting to me. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So that is helpful. Is there anyone from the working group who wants to weigh in on this?
The working group is very happy to have brought you all to this point.
Yes.
And we just want to acknowledge that all of the maps that are in front of the public today are great, and they work, and we don't have any further comment on specifics for any of those maps. We feel like we've said what we have to say.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate that. One more question, which is for Mayor Protem Roberts. When Councilmember Middleton and I did meet with the Desert Sun and pointed out that we were very surprised to hear that we were protecting you, even though you had made some statements about not running, because of, in the Middleton map that was discussed and shared two weeks ago, and the reporter told us was you told her specifically that you would be living on Mel, and that's why she made that decision, which was news to us, because that's not the street. We understood that you would be living on. So can you just publicly answer that and explain? You don't have to give your address, by the way.
Oh, I live to serve. So, yes, for the record, I was asked by the reporter where I live or where I intend to live, because I have purchased the former Lawrence Welk House, which is not, and I'm restoring that house, and I intend to live there, that is not on Mel. That is on Pasayol Mirador. So where the reporter picked up Mel, I don't know. I know Mel is a street that's not far from me, but I don't know how, where that came from on the reporter's part. I will say, though, in the defense of those drawing these maps, and I'm not one of them, that I didn't know whether, I didn't know where my street was with respect to Middleton 5 or what I call Middleton R2-D2, because the maps that we are looking at are tiny. And I did notice that there was a cut through what would potentially be the district that I will be living in, but there were no street names. There was no way to determine whether my street fell into that or not. So I don't know who could have made that determination. It wasn't clear on the map, or it wasn't clear to me. So even when we were discussing these maps at our last meeting, I didn't know where I would be following in the districts, and frankly, I couldn't have cared less, because I don't intend to run for office here in Palm Springs again.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you. And just for the public, we didn't know that either, and then, once the story came out, Councilmember Middleton and I, as a subcommittee, met with our city clerk with a blow-up map and saw that, in the Middleton map shared two weeks ago, as in the Crawford map that had been shared previously, Mayor Protem Roberts would have been in the same district as Mayor Moon and myself. So that never would have resulted in an extra incumbent, as reported. I also want to share that although we are allowed legally to consider incumbency, we made the decision that we did not want to do that. I appreciate people's comments, and they make sense, but that was our decision. And we instructed the city clerk not to have the demographer, who's here, draw maps to reflect that, which is what most cities start with, to see how you could do it. And if you look at some of the maps, there are maps where there's one house out of a neighborhood that's moved in order to protect incumbents who live close to each other. I will say that one of the demographer's maps, in trying to get more of us to touch downtown, actually would have had four of us, I believe, in separate districts. It would have had the mayor and I in separate districts, because his neighborhood touches on Palm Canyon north of my neighborhood. We did not move that forward. So if I, as a member of the subcommittee, wanted to protect incumbents, nothing personal, I like you both very much, I would have been much more concerned about me than them. So it just doesn't even make sense that this was done to protect incumbents, because it wasn't. That said, I will also acknowledge that those stories and the appearance that were then being created from some false information did result in the recommendation of the Crawford being created from some false information did result in the recommendation of the Crawford map. But both maps, and we put all the maps in here for council, because we said we would bring back a combination of Smoke Tree and Crawford, because we liked what Dieter Crawford did for the entire north side of the city, and we liked Smoke Tree from the south side of the city. I saw the Middleton Five map the same day everyone else did, because she'd been working on a lot of maps. And I believe we had some modified maps from the working group that we saw for the first time that same night. So that's because everyone's working constantly on this, right? They weren't trying to hide anything. We didn't talk to them. In fact, we stayed out of all of their meetings, so they could be an independent voice. So this process, I don't want anyone to think is in any way tainted. It was really unbelievable, and especially the working group and our city clerk, who put in 600, 700 hours on this process. So thank you. Now about the maps. I was helpful, and thank you, Dieter, for, those, the south part, four and five, you're fine either way. And I'm really thinking about this, but I will tell you, since the staff report went out on Wednesday night, I've heard and talked to a lot of people, including over 100 realtors, who are unanimous in what they wanted. And not one person in the south has told me they prefer four and five, the way it was split in what is now called the Crawford Two, but prefer it in Middleton Six B. So, and that's everything we've heard tonight. I also want to share that for Sunrise Vista Chino, Councilmember Middleton and I met and agree that, I think it's all of 80 or 90 people, should be kept together. It doesn't, often when we do this, it throws off our numbers, and we have to have balanced numbers, but it actually doesn't in this case. So our recommendation will be, whatever map is chosen, that that part, that includes DAP and those apartments in there, are kept together. So that will be our recommendation tonight. And sort of that's all I have for now. Want to make sure we hear from everyone. But I do think ultimately, we have to decide the best map, and we shouldn't allow what was, any confusion or insinuations dictate it. But I also want to make sure we're very clear, because after spending eight months and getting, instead of the 90 days and having to be finished in July, we negotiated eight and a half months to do this process, with over 30 public meetings, to somehow be undone because of what happened. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Couple of comments. I have one, it's no secret, I mean, a couple of meetings ago, I voted, I was the only one who voted that I preferred four districts and a directly elected mayor, but the four of the five council decided to go five, so case closed, that's done, so move on, which is what we're doing. And it's no, I've lived in my house for 18 years in Vistualus Palmas, and I ain't moving until they carry me out feet first. So, one, I couldn't afford to sell it today and buy something else. So, but I want to thank the council tonight for what I think is a very good move towards the transparency that we've all embraced for the past three years. As we discuss, as we all know, there's nothing in, that information, I think, is important for the public to see. And I really think it's very important that we put that out there, so people can see the information, we've, we've made our decisions and what the decision's been based on. And also, I would like to say that, as I've said in the past, I think any of these maps are going to achieve the goal that we've set for ourselves on the overall goals for doing the districting, which is to, you know, have, have the equality and the opportunity for people to run for office and to spend less money running for office. And I'd like to, as a, one caveat, though, I want to make sure, having been very involved in One PS for the last eight years, and having been president of my neighborhood organization, I know how important it is to neighborhoods not to be split. So I really hope we'll work as hard as we can to make sure that we don't split neighborhoods. And however, another thing we need to consider is, all this work we're doing, and it's really for one election, because there will be, there will be a new census done in another year, or two years, and before the 2021 election, the city will have new demographic data. And so therefore, all this will be done again before, after this next election. So this is not the end, this is not something we're doing that's going to be in stone for many years. So you all have, so somebody, so some group, some council has this to look forward to doing again in a couple of years. But one thing about, one thing we've really worked, wanted to achieve is to make it more affordable for people to run for office. And that's one of the best things about this process we're doing, because each of the districts will have approximately the same number of people. One of the demographics we're looking at is not just race, income, et cetera, but how many people are in that district, and the, and the commonality of the neighborhoods in that district. But, you know, the amount of money will not be that critical. And neighborhood reputation and, or, and participation in neighborhood organizations and involvement in the neighborhood over past years will be what's very important. As other council members have pointed out, this will give people their opportunity to go. Those of us who have run citywide know it is impossible to go door to door to 45,000 people in Palm Springs. I mean, there are 45 neighborhoods and you just can't do it. However, if you're running in one-fifth of the city and it's your neighborhood, you can, you can do that with, with a lot less hardship. And that being said, I think any of these maps would, would achieve our purpose. They're only going to be used for one election. And I, having studied all these maps, I thought they were all good, but having read all the emails we've received, listened to people tonight, I'm leaning towards the Middleton Test Six B, D2, D3 swap map. That's a long title. Okay. Councilmember Middleton?
I want to thank everyone who has come out. And one of the things that I said a lot a year ago, when I was running for office, was that if I made a mistake, I would admit it and learn from it. I made a mistake two weeks ago. That mistake was not because I was trying to somehow or another deviously insert a map at the end of the process. It was a mistake of not properly explaining what had happened and why. And that comes from something that is far simpler and easier to explain: fatigue. And it happens to all of us, and it happened to me. And so I've been talking with lots of folks over the last two weeks about remembering that we have to give ourselves a little bit of time. But I do want to make a couple of comments. I never, at any time, spoke with anyone other than Councilmember Coors, who's a member of the subcommittee, regarding how any of these maps should look, who is a member of the city council. I did not talk with the mayor, with the Mayor Protem, or with Councilmember Holstich. To the best of my knowledge, based on one very quick phone, not phone call, conversation with Mayor Protem Roberts, as he and I and other members of council were driving back from the Ontario Airport, where he was describing the new home that he was purchasing, the Lawrence Welk home, I thought I heard him say during that conversation that that home was in Movie Colony. And I never bothered to follow up with that, but throughout this process, to the best of my knowledge, that's until two weeks ago, from this dais, when he said it was in El Mirador, was the first that I ever heard. So, and why would anyone redraw a map with regard to Mayor Protem Roberts when he had said multiple occasions, "I'm not planning to run for reelection"? Now, I can't say I did not know where Councilmember Holstich lives, or anyone else on city council, because they've been in their homes. I knew where they lived. But I wasn't trying to draw maps to separate them. I will say that nine people drew maps that were population balanced. Mike Guerra, who lives in the historic tennis club, he drew a north-south line at the south end of town that separated Councilmember Holstich and I. Donald Prell, who also, as I understand it, lives in the historic tennis club, drew a line north-south along Sunrise that separated the two of us. Don Barrett, who lives in Warm Sands, drew a line down Sunrise that separated Councilmember Holstich and I. David Friedman, who lives in Indian Canyon, drew a line down Sunrise at the south end of town that separates Councilmember Holstich and I. Bob Heimbach, who lives in the Upper West Side neighborhood at the far north end of town, drew a line at the south end of town down Sunrise that separated Councilmember Holstich and I. Dixie Miller, who lives, along with Dieter Crawford, in the Desert Highland Community neighborhood, drew a line down the south end of town on Sunrise that separated Councilmember Holstich and I. Mr. Doobie, who may love maps even more than I do, drew mostly maps that put Councilmember Holstich and I together, mostly because he tended to orient things east to west. That was a very legitimate point of view. Dieter Crawford, in his map on the south end of town, and somewhat more other than in District One, tended to orient the city east to west, and he had us together. In making a determination that I thought Sunrise was an appropriate boundary, it is a major arterial. Neighborhoods up and down our city, that are east and west of Sunrise, have very different demographics, very different orient, and the, every neighborhood organization, with the sole exception of Sunrise Vista Chino, for a few homes on the west side, and the Four Seasons at the far north end of town, uses Sunrise as a boundary line. It's a normal boundary line. Councilmember Holstich and I live 1.7 miles from one another. That's, that's just not right next door. I could go on, and I don't think I should, should go on with this. But last thing, when it comes to south end of town, I do know this, this area pretty well, and connect with an awful lot of people. And there were two individuals, and they both spoke this evening, who were incredibly influential in terms of how I drew the south end of town. And that was conversations that I had had over the course of many months regarding this process, with John McCoy from the Andreas Hills neighborhood, and David Friedman from the Indian Canyon's neighborhoods. And it was knowing their involvement in their communities, their knowledge, that was very persuasive. Last thing I want to say on this map is, I put it together on November 13th, that's the date it was submitted to the demographer, was identified as a test map, because what I was testing was whether or not the concept that Councilmember Coors and I had of combining the Smoke Tree map with the Dixie Miller modification and the Dieter Crawford map was going to work. Testing it to see whether it would be population balanced, testing it to see whether or not the demographics would work. And then we got back information that demonstrated it would, it would work. And we made a mistake in presenting that map two weeks ago, because it looked like something that perhaps had been sitting around for a long time. It had not been. It was something that was constructed simply to demonstrate, you could bring these two Smoke Tree with the Dixie Miller modification and the Dieter Crawford map together. Mr. Crawford is somebody who I admire and respect, and I was at almost all of the 35 public meetings. And Dieter Crawford was there at almost every single one of them, reaching out to the people in the communities and explaining to them what he was trying to accomplish. And it was people of color, largely, in those community meetings that came forward and said they wanted this map to, that Dieter had put together, because it combined their communities, but most importantly, because it was a member of their community that was responsible for drawing that map. It was, Edwin was present at Tubayanihens, where folks from the Filipino community, a community that had largely been disenfranchised, were present and being heard and speaking up. We had multiple meetings in the Desert Highland Community neighborhood, where people were coming together. The working group, Mr. Doobie, Grace Garner, Stephen Moses, Kathy Wormick, who are here tonight, were at almost every single one of those meetings. Tyzak was present at Coyote Run, knocking on doors in Spanish to the community and bringing them into the community room at Coyote Run for them to get information about what we were trying to do. In what city, anywhere in this state, has the city hired a consultant to go into an affordable housing complex and knock on doors to bring people who spoke only Spanish to come and hear conversation about what was going on in terms of the maps? That, that, that is the story that we should be talking about. And I am so embarrassed that we're not talking about that story. Because what the people in that, in our working group did, and what our communities of color have done over the last few months, is incredible. The dividends are going to be paid off over time, because we have started a conversation with, with communities that have been disenfranchised, and they are not going to be disenfranchised in the future. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for the subcommittee. I know many factors went into the determination of districts. One concern I have is whether, whether likely voters were considered. My concern being that we could create districts where we don't have a lot of voter interest. As we all know, we have a certain percentage of our community that even registers to vote, and then half of that, that group that registers doesn't necessarily vote. So that's one question. The, and, and I don't care who answers that question, whether it's the council subcommittee or our, our greater subcommittee. The other question I have was, and I guess this will, this has to go to Councilwoman In, in your original map, which I guess was, which is titled Middleton Test Five, you do show a cutout in the El Mirador neighborhood, a small cutout, from District Three. So between District Two and Three, there's a cutout. And then in District, and then in Middleton Test Six A, I'm sorry, no, not that one, in Middleton Test Six B, D2, D3, which I call R2D2, and if that's not confusing to you, it's, it's confusing to us, I'd like to know why that same piece of El Mirador was cut back out of the map. So whoever wants to take either question, I'd love those answers.
Justin, let me, I'll start, and maybe you can pick it up. Sure. And this is Dr. Justin Levitt from National Demographics Corporation, who was a great help to us. The original map that Mr. Crawford put together, there are a couple of blocks just north of the boundaries of the El Mirador neighborhood, that are south of Vista Chino, that are largely apartment complexes, they are largely economically less advantaged than the El Mirador neighborhood itself, and they actually sit outside the El Mirador boundaries. It was clear to me that what Mr. Crawford was trying to do was to pull those apartment complexes into District Two, which is less economically privileged than most of District Three is. In doing so, in his map, he had overcome the boundaries of El Mirador and was actually splitting splitting a couple of blocks of the El Mirador neighborhood. We met with the El Mirador neighborhood, they asked to be held together. So we tried to present a map that would include those apartment complexes in 2 rather than 3, but also conform to the El Mirador boundaries. And here's where I think I need to turn it over to Dr. Levitt, because what we ran into is census blocks that didn't help us.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember Middleton. I apologize in advance. I'm recovering from a little bit of a cold, so I'll try to talk very close to the microphone. And when we started looking at the Middleton Test 5 map, the El Mirador neighborhood was cut in half. About 60% of the population was in Area 2 in the Dieter Crawford map, and about 40% was in District 3. In order to get more of that El Mirador neighborhood into District 3, we had to kind of go down between, sort of on the west end of El Mirador, down to where the hospital is. And so that was kind of the little trade-off that we made, which put about 90% of the population of El Mirador into District 3, with the idea that if council directed it, it would be very, it would be much more straightforward to divide that one census block with the remaining portion of El Mirador, rather than a community that was literally divided in half. And so when we came back to it, and then this was something that was done for population, it's really impossible to go all the way up to Vista Chino in District 3 because there simply isn't the population for a single district north of Vista Chino and south of San Rafael. And so we had to go south. On this map, we chose to continue in the El Mirador area, but try to get the El Mirador area together as much as possible. And so on the 6A map, we simply took the existing boundary and preserved it. So there's no change in the El Mirador area between Middleton Test 5 and Middleton 6A.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I was asking, well, Middleton Test 5 and Test 6A are the same with respect to that detail.
Right.
But on 6B, D2, D3 swap, it eliminate, there it is, it eliminates that piece of El Mirador altogether out of District 2. And that was my question.
Right. And so the concern was, okay, we're still dividing El Mirador in that map. So what would it take if you were to try to get all of El Mirador into District 3? And so this is something that we were kind of looking at, you know, I was kind of looking at the numbers, and it turns out if you follow Vista Chino simply all the way to Sunrise, you could really put all of Oasis del Sol, El Rancho Vista Estates, and Sunrise-Vista Chino into District 2. Now, we clearly have a census block that actually includes portions of Movie Colony East, portion of Sunrise-Vista Chino, and actually a portion of the census block is not in any neighborhood whatsoever. And that would have to be looked at, but you could simply follow Vista Chino, which may be a more intuitive boundary than following the smaller neighborhoods between, you know, Vista Chino and, you know, I think it's, you know, in the El Mirador area.
Okay, so thank you, doctor. I think what you told me was that you were keeping the El Mirador neighborhood intact.
That's right.
Or that was the intention of the change in 6B, D2, D3 swap. So, doctor, while you're standing at the podium, could you answer my first question about likely voters and whether that is considered at all in our criteria that we use?
You know, and I'll say like, it is a criteria, but it is a secondary criteria. The courts recognize, in fact, the Voting Rights Act recognizes, that you may not get the same number of registered voters in a district, for example, with a higher percentage of non-white voters, or citizens, or residents. And the courts have said repeatedly that that is something that is desirable, especially when it helps candidates of color elect a candidate of choice. So to give another example, the State Assembly District covering east Los Angeles, very heavily Latino, has about 50,000 registered voters. There are other assembly districts that have 200,000, 250,000 registered voters. And the courts have said, well, you know, that's okay, because in this district, you have a younger population, you have more non-citizens, and so to have a real community representative, the number of likely voters doesn't have to be equal. And so what I would say here is, it's one of the things I'm looking at with the demographics. We have districts where the percentage of the population under 18 is 5%, 10%. And we have another district where the percent of the population under 18 is over 25%. That's going to mean a difference in the number of registered voters between those two districts. But that is something that may be desirable, especially if you live in that district with a higher percentage under 18.
I understand, thank you. That makes a lot of sense to me. Those are my questions for now. With respect to map choices, I want to hear more from my colleagues. The maps are getting so similar now that I'm having a hard time actually choosing one, so I'm looking to the subcommittee to help narrow them down for me, frankly.
Councilman Coors?
Sure. And just on these maps, if you see, just to give the example that was talked about is District 1 will have less voter registration because it has 26% under 18 who can't vote. So that will change, obviously, over time. Well, some of the districts, as the demographer said, don't have that. So that's why those numbers turn out the way they do.
So, and I think what I'm hearing too is that frankly, it doesn't matter, because again, much in the same way incumbency won't matter after we're no longer sitting here, districts will change. Developments will be built and bring in new people and increase the number of voters, or people will move. So I see in the long run, it's, the sands are shifting so quickly in districts, it simply won't matter on those two levels.
Thank you. A couple of things. One is just following up, you know, on the mayor's point, because they're spending so much time on the south end, which may never be voted on in this configuration, because it's 1, 2, and 3 that will be voted on at the next election. But the difference is, to Mayor Protem Roberts, Councilmember Middleton and I together came up with the modifications that are seen in D. Crawford Modified 2, the first page, and Middleton Test 6B swap, et cetera, the last page.
D2, D3.
Right. So we both are in agreement on those, the modifications, which really cover districts 1, 2, and 3. Having the straight line on Vista Chino, going down Sunrise, making that one exception that we talked about already to keep Sunrise-Vista Chino together. It was important, the demographer and the attorneys did not want us to be splitting census tracts, which impacted our final maps. That was an important issue, because when you split a census track, you lose, you have a lot less certainty about the demographics. And so that impacted what we did up there as well in our decisions. So those are the two maps that I think we're talking about. I haven't heard much about anything else. I think as we look at the, because someone did bring up, you know, wealth and income level, and when I saw the numbers on the various maps, they're not that different, but District 3 in the modified maps, if you look at household income, has the largest percentage of people who make $25,000 or less, even though it does include Movie Colony, Visilas Palmas, and Olas Palmas. District 5 has the most people who make over $200,000.
So, I'm sorry, roll back. You said in District 3, you have...
If you look at household income on the very back page, you can see, you know, it's pretty split, but if you look at the, one with the most people with income over $200,000 is District 5. That's 10% versus 4% in District 3.
Gotcha.
Which includes what I think many people think are the more higher income levels.
Gotcha.
Is there anything you want to add to that?
Well, and the only, the only other thing I want to add, and again, until we get a little deeper into this, is that what I consistently hear, which makes sense, is that neighborhoods, you know, we've gone to great trouble to divide our neighborhoods and allow our community to divide themselves into neighborhoods. It would make perfect sense that none of them want to give those neighborhoods up, or at least in districts, in cutting themselves up. So I don't know what level of priority the subcommittees are putting on preserving our 49 neighborhoods, is it 49?
45.
45 neighborhoods. But I would like it to be a very high priority that we not divide neighborhoods.
So when both the working group and the council unanimously supported criteria, which, and there was different priorities, and that was not as high a priority as maximizing the goals of the California Voting Rights Act, or creating majority and minority district, but this map, I believe, with that one change, is maybe one neighborhood group out of all of them that will be split.
Is the Vista...
Sunrise-Vista Chino will be together, it would be the Gene Autry neighborhood, I believe, but Councilmember Middleton knows the neighborhood groups really well.
Okay. So that would be the only neighborhood group, if I'm looking at the maps?
Sure. Let me, let me talk about where we have potentially splits. And frankly, it doesn't make, if we're just looking at Crawford and R2D2, it doesn't matter as far as the splits. You have a split in the Upper West Side neighborhood.
In which map? You're talking about our...
Either one.
On Crawford or Autry?
Either one.
Okay, got it. They're virtually the same map, right?
Absolutely the same in these respects.
Okay.
Upper West Side gets split along San Rafael Drive, because the Upper West Side neighborhood crosses San Rafael Drive. There is part of it that is north of San Rafael and part that is south. You see where that line just above Racket Club, right there, that is a part of the Upper West Side neighborhood. They drew their boundaries after the Racket Club Estates neighborhood had been formed, frankly, many years after it had been formed. And they picked up all of the area that was not in any neighborhood. That was a very good thing on their part. I have talked with that neighborhood and their leadership. They would prefer not to be split, but they recognize that because they cross San Rafael, and that San Rafael was being considered frequently as a dividing line, that that could happen. What they ask is, our first request is, please don't split us. The second request was, if you split, split us at San Rafael Drive. And that's what this map does. In terms of population balances, and Dr. Levitt, you can answer this, it would be very difficult if we pulled that into, number one, to...
Upper West Side is actually one of the largest neighborhoods in the city by population, and it's also one of the most demographically diverse. And San Rafael is actually a very logical way to cut it in terms of its demographic differences between the north and the southern portion.
Okay. Could you stay there as we kind of walk through? The other neighborhood that on this map is split is the Gene Autry neighborhood. And that is this little square that's being highlighted now, that is east of Whitewater Drive, west of Gene Autry Trail, south of Villa Suela, and north of Vista Chino. There are 262 people who live in that area. They are a part of the Gene Autry neighborhood. Gene Autry has asked that they not be split. But from there, I'll let Dr. Levitt take over as to why that is something that we are very seriously looking at making a split.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those places where, where east of Whitewater, the population is about 70% Latino by eligible voters. West, it is less than 25% by eligible voters. And this becomes a question of keeping communities together. While there is certainly a community of interest in the Gene Autry neighborhood proper, there's also a very interesting question about whether that portion of Gene Autry has more in common with the areas to the kind of northwest than it does with the areas directly west of Whitewater.
The third area where we potentially have a split is one that we talked about a little bit two weeks ago, and that's directly north of there, and that's the Whitewater Club neighborhood. And Whitewater Club is a small area of five HOAs that sit inside the abandoned Palm Springs Country Club golf course, which will ultimately be developed as the Serena Park neighborhood. In drawing their neighborhood boundaries, they also went up and picked up the vacant space that is around the Golden Sands Mobile Home Park. That will be area that is part of Serena Park neighborhood if it is developed. There's actually no one that lives there right now. And the Golden Sands Mobile Home Park is another community that is overwhelmingly Latino. And it is very well-connected also to the Four Seasons track that is around there. So making that split seems to be a very logical thing to do.
It also allows us to use San Rafael as a dividing line all the way across, which means, very intuitive, Area 1 is north of San Rafael, District 2 is between San Rafael and Vista Chino. That will make it much easier for people to identify the district that they live in.
The last neighborhood that's split is the Sunrise-Vista Chino neighborhood. And if I could ask Dr. Levitt to focus on that, it's done in all of the maps. We're dealing with 80 people that currently, I believe it's 80.
So I actually have, this is something where we need, first of all, some council guidance and direction, perhaps from the Sunrise-Vista Chino Estates Neighborhood Association. Because according to the maps, the neighborhood boundary, as it's technically in the city files, splits the apartment complex directly adjacent to the Desert AIDS Project. And so I am looking for some guidance in terms of how to split this neighborhood, or the census block, if it was your desire, not just with respect to that area, but also the area you can see that's not part of Sunrise Vista or Movie Colony East. That includes two additional apartment complexes, the Vista Del Monte and the Vista Del Serena Apartments.
I did speak with David Brinkman, the executive director of Desert AIDS Project, this afternoon. They work very closely with the Sunrise-Vista Chino neighborhood, and it would certainly be their preference that that close relationship be continued and that DAP, its affordable housing project, and the boundaries of the homes that are just west of Sunrise and Sunrise-Vista Chino be brought together in one district.
The question is, so where would that border be, and what does that do for a census tract split, I think?
Right. There are 73 single-family homes that are very clearly in the Movie Colony East neighborhood. There are also three apartment complexes, the one at the Desert Healthcare Foundation, and the additional two that I mentioned, Vista Del Monte and Vista Del Serena, which both appear to be in that area that's not assigned to a neighborhood, between Sunrise-Vista Chino and Movie Colony East.
So maybe one of the neighborhood representatives could sort of come up and help answer those questions? That would be appreciated. Thank you.
This is just to make sure we know...
Yeah, we do exactly what we intend to do.
I can't speak to the census tracts, but I can tell you that the apartments behind Desert AIDS Project are considered part of the Desert AIDS Project and part of our neighborhood group. We've outreach to the co-ops, there are co-ops behind, two or three times and have no response. The ownership of that co-op is actually on the East Coast. So we're still looking for some way to find a personal, local connection to meet with that co-op. It was always our intent to bring them into our neighborhood organization. It was always our intent to bring them into our neighborhood organization. That doesn't address the whole issue of census tracts. Sorry. Don't do numbers.
Thank you.
No. But I would say then, from a numbers and balancing perspective, at this point, if it was the council's direction, it would be easiest to just look at the Desert AIDS Project today, and then if, you know, when we do this again in 2021, when we have better lines, when we have better census geography, we might be able to get those co-ops maybe even into a block, so we know the exact population we're talking about there.
If I may ask, so you're saying you don't think it's possible, because of census tracts, to include those apartment complexes or co-ops as well? Because I would like to see them grouped more with Sunrise Vista Chino. We heard the testimony there that that's their definition of their neighborhood than Movie Colony East. I just don't want to isolate any neighborhoods that might not be represented or be included in surrounding district areas.
So the challenge is, that census block has 390 people in it, which makes sense. It's got three apartment complexes plus, you know, 75 homes. Now, what we're going to try to, what we have to do is figure out how many units there are in kind of the average population, and count the number of units in each one. Right now, on both maps, Districts 2 and 3 are both slightly over the ideal population. If we're talking about moving people from, a lot of people from 3 into 2, that could potentially put 3 under where it needs to be, but District 2 above 5%, well over what it needs to be, which might increase your total deviation, depending on the map, over 10%. So I know, I know in the future, we'll have changes, we'll have better data, we'll have more precise data. I'd recommend the most minimal switch today, but knowing that in two years, you're going to have better data, and you can come back to this question.
Can I ask another question while I have you? I was following everything, the story behind the El Mirador changes. So now, as it stands on both maps, were those lower-income communities included with El Mirador in District 3, or are they now in District 2?
Well, I actually wanted to offend District 3's community of interest a bit, because what we've done in District 3 in the revised maps, in the Test 6B, in the Dieter Crawford Division 2, is put a lot of renters into District 3 on both of the maps. The El Mirador area, the Midtown area, the Baristo area, and even Sunrise Park have a very high share of renters. And so what, if you look at the demographic data, District 1 has a much lower share of renters, a much higher percentage of single-family homes than District 3 does. What you're getting in District 3 is really a downtown corridor, a mix of very wealthy neighborhoods, with a lot of younger people, mid-20s and 30s, living in apartments. And especially in Midtown and Baristo, where you've seen a lot of developments of multifamily housing, condo complexes, I see it just when I'm driving through town. You know, that really, that north end of El Mirador looks a lot like Baristo and Midtown when it comes to that percentage of renters and percentage of multifamily housing.
I agree with you, though it's geographically distant a bit from those areas. So I'm just concerned, as talking to the council about drawing these boundaries, and I hear that we're limited based on the census tracts and the data that we have right now, but making sure to draw, I actually think geographic distance to communities like you and your communities of interest is more important, especially as we're talking about getting people who've been underrepresented in neighborhood organizations involved in that process.
Yeah, I actually believe Councilmember Coors was recognized. He's the sort of guy that hijacked here.
No, we had some questions. So, you know, throughout this process, Councilmember Middleton, sort of being the neighborhood expert, having chaired 1PS, and me pretending to be a lawyer, recovering lawyer that I am, she looked a lot more at talking to the neighborhood groups, and I really was looking at the criteria for making these decisions. And we've talked about it a lot at these meetings, they're communities of interest, and the working group did a lot of work on that. And that's why we held all these meetings throughout the city and speaking to people. So just to follow up on Councilmember Holstidge, talking to people who live on those apartment buildings just south of Vista Chino, they actually feel more connected below than above. And if you go down Palm Canyon into the first parts of Olas Palmas, and that little section of Vistalas Palmas for the first block, and Indian Canyon, those are a lot of apartments, right? So they're not, I agree with you, there's a lot in other areas, but there are a lot of other apartments in that area. So that was one of the reasons. So as we looked at this, I just want to, because we've talked a lot about other things, there are a lot of factors, obviously, that went into this. And we got so much from the community, and I just want to thank 400 or 500 people who actually turned out, let alone all the emails and phone calls we got, were very helpful. You know, District 1, in addition to having protected minorities as a community of interest, other things that really came up in the discussions were that in both the Moth and Desert Highlands, we have our two community centers, they really felt, those are so integral to those neighborhoods, and having that similarity and having neighborhood-based community centers was really a factor for them, and they wanted to be connected. A lot of the neighborhoods in District 1 resulted from what happened in Section 14, and people being forced to move to the outskirts of the city. So there's a lot of other interests that are tied together there. If you look at District 2, a lot of it was, which we've discussed, you know, sort of San Rafael and Vista Chino being such major corridors, and in the new maps, you know, cutting it sunrise. District 3, we really did, Vistalas Palmas, Olas Palmas, Movie Colony, Mirador, you know, those are concentrations of some of the more expensive homes, but we also have the similarities. We have, you know, two of our major parks, Ruth Hardy and Sunrise, and schools that people have in common. District 4 and 5, I would go through until, although we haven't decided. But one thing that really hit me in the Middleton Test 6B map is, and I didn't really think about until I heard more over the last week especially, and some tonight, is if you look at the Crawford one, you know, it looks like that's all connected, they look like they're both all connected, but you can't get from Andreas Hills east without going up and around, right? There's sort of that mountain issue and other things there. So when we look at the demography of it, and the things we heard from folks, I can see the reason most of the maps had the split down Sunrise. You can't get from, you know, those neighborhoods to Araby Cove, and those neighborhoods to the east. So that was sort of the thinking there. But we heard folks, there were, you know, these community meetings happened in schools, including in Spanish. We had it at the Palm Springs High School. So we got input about schools, and how people felt they wanted to be grouped. So there was so much various input on all these factors that really led to these two maps that we see in front of us. So I just want to make sure we shared that with the community. And just one thing, sorry to call you up again, but the demographer, are each and every one of these maps, in your opinion, fit what we're supposed to do pursuant to the California Voting Rights Act?
With your permission, Mr. Mayor?
Without a legal inclusion?
I'll ask on the issue of demographic balance as well.
Yeah, on demographics, yes. I'm not asking you as a lawyer. That's their job.
I think all of these both meet the intent of the California Voting Rights Act, and it would protect the city against any federal challenge on voting rights issues as well.
And that was something we did work on throughout this process with our two attorneys and with the demographers, to make sure we were following all the law as we did this. And that was really important. And of course, the California Voting Rights Act, which is very much, and was passed, to avoid dilution of protected minority votes, which has resulted in some splits of neighborhoods, but for population, and to make sure we weren't diluting minority votes, we wanted to make sure we were maximizing the goals of this law, which is something I think we all felt very strongly about as a council.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission and that of the council, could I ask our special counsel to give, just for purposes of clear record, some of the statutory CVRA goals, and whether these two maps are consistent with those?
Certainly, please.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Kotkin, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jim Priest, Best Beston Krieger. Yes, I would echo Mr. Levitt's comments, Mr. Kotkin's comments as well. We have looked at these maps. We believe that they are in compliance with the CVRA, both letter of the law and the spirit of the law. It does also comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act in order to make sure that these districts are as equal as possible. That's one of the major factors. And then deviations allowed for things like communities of interest, which we've been talking a lot about this evening, natural, topographical, and other boundaries within the city, making sure that these districts are as compact as we can make them, while still ensuring that, you know, the neighborhoods are preserved and all that. So our opinion is that these maps are compliant, CVRA and FVRA.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, I'm going to make this quick. I don't think District 1 is under debate by anyone at this point, but one last thing I want to point out, in both Desert Highland Gateway and Moth Park, we have neighborhoods that are immediately adjacent to small manufacturing and light industrial. That is another community of interest that they have, and that has most particularly become more poignant as cannabis cultivation and distribution is tending to concentrate in those areas. So I think we have, in District 1, a map that we very much need to preserve, regardless of which map we choose.
Okay, any other discussion? Anyone like to make a motion? I don't know about you guys, but when I get in my car and my GPS map comes on, I cringe now.
I live to serve.
Yep. Any of these are going to really work.
Yeah, I mean, they're so close at this point, but I think that, I think although it had a sort of controversial launching, I think Middleton Test 6B, D2, D3 swap, also known as R2D2, probably is the best refinement of all the other maps we've been considering over the last few weeks. So I'm going to move that we move forward with Middleton Test 6B, D2, D3 swap.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you. I would second that motion, though I want to note, for the record and for the purposes of that motion, that that would include moving the boundary for Sunrise Vista Chino, as we discussed.
Yes, I would accept that amendment, or acknowledge that we agreed on that by acclamation.
And then, I'm still concerned about the apartments near El Mirador, and including those, though it sounded like that can't be done based on the demographics.
You mean adding those back to?
Right.
Well, I want to ask the maker of that map and the subcommittee if that's the case. Or the doctor.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, because I haven't run all the exact numbers yet, but I do think at this point, adding the two co-ops would take your deviation above potentially 10%. I think we can do the Desert AIDS Project for sure, to where the current neighborhood boundary is, and then as the neighborhoods continue to develop, we can revisit this issue in two years.
There are two areas I'm talking about, so just to be really clear. So there's the Sunrise Vista Chino neighborhood with the Desert AIDS Project, right, and the two co-ops?
There is.
The Desert AIDS Project includes an apartment complex that is attached to the complex.
Right, so you're saying we can't, I would like to see us include the co-ops, because I think otherwise it geographically isolates them by districts, but we can't do it based on the demographics, you're saying?
I think, given that those two co-ops probably have the bulk of those 390 people, that that would put about, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 of those 390 into District 3, or into District 2, which would take that number over.
Got it.
And that would get into big changes in the map to balance that out. And I think we can revisit that issue, perhaps, I don't even know if there will be an election in these districts, there probably will be an election in this district, but it can certainly be something that is addressed in the next redistricting.
Thank you. Two of us will be here for that. It'll be fun. And my other, the other area, though, I want to talk about, because the working group has raised this a few times, is the El Mirador area and the apartments around there, right? And so can we change the boundaries to include that? And I don't know if the working group who had raised this issue has any comments.
So, Councilmember Middleton?
Speaker?
Are you proposing that we go back to how it was originally designated in Middleton Test 5, and I think also on a Crawford map?
That's my question, if we can do that, because I think that was really intentionally done by Dieter Crawford and the working group to include certain neighborhoods together.
And well, what if we do, and what if we don't? I'd like both scenarios on that.
So, yeah, okay, I can tell you, because we looked at that in a conference call I had with the subcommittee, those four blocks just south of Vista Chino, where most of the apartments are, have a combined population of about 700 people. Each of those blocks has about 150 to 200 each. So at that point, you're talking about having to move, Oasis Del Sol is not the right population to swap for that, you would need more of El Mirador. So you would have to essentially move all of Sunrise Vista Chino, because that's the only place where you could really get that population, into 3, which would cut off Oasis Del Sol and El Rancho Vista.
Could we potentially, just throwing it out there, I want your opinion, is could we switch back the El Mirador to where it was before on the original maps, and then take Sunrise Vista Chino all the way, the other way?
So that is essentially what we did in the Middleton 6A. And this is the Middleton version of this. The Dieter Crawford one is interchangeable, but...
We are really splitting this here.
But this would really be going back to a different map. This would also necessarily divide El Mirador somehow.
Does anyone from the working group have a comment on that? Because I just wanted to raise it for the council, because it's been discussed a lot for the working group, which did important work on this. We're splitting it, but we have to do that right now, because we're picking a final map.
Well, what I'm hearing is that if we don't make that adjustment that is on the screens right now, back to Middleton 6B, 23, it's, then we'll have to pick it up in another district, then we'll have to redraw it elsewhere, correct? To get the same, to reload the lost population?
Right. I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's very, you know, I think we'll be, we'll certainly be able to do the adjustment if we're just moving, for example, the Desert AIDS Project and its apartment complex.
But if we...
But if we're talking about, you know, moving whole neighborhoods, especially, you know, populations of 500, 700 people, then we're going to have to start about, going back to the, that's going to mean you have to draw something else, change something else in the map.
So based on that, I'd like to amend my original motion to add back the piece of the El Mirador neighborhood from...
No, it's in 6B.
It's, well, it's in Test 5. Is it in 6B?
No, 6B is 300.
No, right. But we want to bring, we want to bring it back the way it was in 6A Test, right?
Can you answer my question?
That was...
But he's saying if we don't do that, we're going to have to...
The opposite. If we do that, it's going to make some changes.
Oh, so is it best, I don't understand, is it best to leave it out?
So let me explain.
Okay, doctor, I got it, I got it. So I go back to my original motion, then.
Right. So just, can I, so the record is really clear, because we have to be clear tonight on a map, maybe the city attorney, what the changes to the map in the motion, which is Middleton Test 6B, what are the specific changes? Because we have to be very clear in the record tonight, or it throws off the timeline.
Okay, so what would the changes be to Middleton Test 6B, D2, D3 swap, as we are looking at it tonight?
I haven't been able to follow it, so I'm going to have to...
By the way, that's a really good answer.
The demographer knows.
Okay. Doctor, can you let us know?
The motion, the request was to move all of what is currently in Sunrise Vista Chino, which is the Desert AIDS... which is the Desert AIDS Project and its associated housing, into District 2 in blue in order to keep that neighborhood together.
And what other effects will that have on the map?
That is fine.
So we can simply loop around DAP apartment housing and be done with it?
So we will have to designate which parcels, for example, are moving, but that will not have an effect on population such that it'll take you over your legal maximum of 10%.
Okay, so is that the only change that we would propose in order to keep Vista-Sunrise together?
And Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interjecting. It's possible we may not have an NDC representative here on December 10th, which is when we're contemplating coming back. I just want to have Dr. Levitt state for the record that he is 100% confident that there will be a demographic balance as required with the change that's being proposed.
In order to be 100% confident, I would need to do this analysis, which could take a couple of hours.
Okay.
And there it is. Are you close to 100%?
I'm pretty confident that if you're just moving the Desert AIDS Project, that it's not going to be...
Given the map, it looks...
Okay, so for, hopefully the last time I will amend my original motion.
I'll tell you one more. Just because the name is so confusing and because this is based on the Crawford map, absent objection, I would name this Dieter Crawford Final Map.
Wait, 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 back up. Why are we renaming it?
Because it's a very, because it's a name we're all making fun of, and it's confusing, and it's based on Dieter Crawford's map, so...
Isn't it going to be more confusing for people to now?
I think that's...
I think, I think we can safely call it what it is and what it's been titled that everybody's been looking at, which is Middleton...
Final Map.
Well, Final Map, but also known, for those that are holding these right now...
Oh, yes.
As Middleton Test 6B-D2 backslash D3 swap. Okay, so the only change to that would be that we will be adding in the apartment housing that is attached to the Desert AIDS Project.
And the Desert AIDS Project itself.
Including the Desert AIDS Project, which is one building.
Yeah, all the, basically the proper, the areas that are currently in Sunrise-Vistachino.
Okay.
Neighborhood association.
Okay, do we have it? Oh, we got it. Dr. Ready, do you have that? Does your, Tony?
City Clerk.
Got it? Everybody's good? Cindy, you happy?
The city clerk's got it, we're all set.
Okay, all right.
And we'll get something in writing for the next meeting from NDC.
All right. Mayor, will you hit the gavel, please, or something?
No, wait, the motion is on the floor and been made and seconded. Do we need to vote on this? Anthony?
I was...
Yeah, we need to vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you closed the public hearing.
Pardon?
I'm not sure if you closed the public hearing. I apologize for interjecting. You have that gavel.
Okay, now it is.
Okay, motion's on the floor.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, now we have one other item which we added when we went and as we commenced the meeting earlier before closed session and open session, and that is to discuss the schedule...
Scheduling, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Coming up for future meetings, which...
Well, there's two, just, there's the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, the next, the CVRA meeting we're going to introduce, and then we also wanted to talk about commission interviews. So Mayor, we could begin with maybe the joint meeting when we talked last, the 10th was originally scheduled, was not going to work, and we wondered if council could check their calendars and maybe we could, you could nominate a date that would work for everybody.
That's for the joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting.
Correct. And I would, Flynn, I don't know if you have dates, I think you were checking with the Planning Commission just to see what kind of availability they had, and I didn't know if you had any nominations from them.
Yes, I did check with the Planning Commission on both December 17th and December 18th. I've heard from four of my planning commissioners, three would be available, one would not. I anticipate that the other two would be available on those dates as well, December 17th and December 18th.
17th, we have a special counsel meeting, interviews for Planning Commission candidates, but I guess we could change that.
Well, how about the 18th?
We're talking about in the evening, right? To be clear.
The 18th works for me.
That's fine, for me.
18th works for me.
With such enthusiasm.
Do we have a date?
Does, yeah, 18th works?
Great.
December 18th at 6:00 PM.
18th at 6:00 PM.
So the joint meeting from, originally scheduled on the 10th will now go to the 18th.
For that part of it, yeah, for the Planning Commission.
Okay, and, Mr. Clerk, I'll let you discuss the other meeting.
So we have the 17th for the interviews of the Planning Commission. We have, I believe, 13 applicants, so that will take several hours. But for the HSPB, we have, at this point, four applications, and Measure J, we have, I believe, 11. So we're looking at about two and a half hours. And any date that all councils available.
We have to do this, and December's becoming impossible.
Really is.
Delayed this so far, could we go to January?
Because we still have to do the CVRA meeting.
If council's comfortable with doing the appointments in January for those two commissions, that works.
I think we have to go to January, we just can't do it.
Agreed.
Are there any terms that we need to extend of those commissions in order to be able to do that?
Commissioners' terms, they can remain seated until there is a replacement unless they are hitting their full two-term maximum. I'm not sure if anybody's doing that, but if anybody could be eligible for reappointment, they'll remain seated until it's filled.
I think we have to, there's just...
Yeah.
Okay, but now we have the extra CVRA meeting we have to do.
We can do that if we need, on December 5th.
Anthony, you want to address the extra CVRA meeting we have to do? You want to do that on the 10th?
Currently, we already have that scheduled for the 10th.
So we had two meetings scheduled for the 10th. Okay, so the CVRA meeting will be on the 10th.
Okay, so that's, okay.
And the 10th and then the 19th, that's enough of your notice?
That's insane.
Yes, the 10th and 19th.
I hesitate to ask us, but when will we be addressing the even-year, odd-year things as far as the election? Will that be at the same time we do the CVRA or will that be later?
No, so in Jan, we need to get through the maps and the ordinance, and then in January, we're going to, the next thing on the plate is when the election dates is first and then the other issues from the working group. We'd like to get all of those done in January.
Okay, so we don't need to do the even-odd-year thing as part of the CVRA?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, no, we're shaking his head. Yeah, I think we need to get through all this.
Okay, just want to make...
And make sure the lawyers can give us the most recent analysis, there's a recent court case, and we want to make sure that's, but we want it to sign in January so people can decide if they're running for office and when.
But to make it very clear to, you know, I really feel badly when we have to, anytime we have a meeting, I mean, one of my jobs is to keep this meeting under control and follow the rules, and I can't make exceptions for, we can't make exceptions for anyone. So I feel sort of badly when I have to tell people to, they can't speak on a certain subject. But this will give two meetings on the 10th of December and the 19th of December, when anyone can come and speak on any aspect of the CVRA, any of the work we've done so far that they wish to speak on, correct? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, thank you for noting that that was an add-on item, which the council did vote 5-0 to add on pursuant to 54954.2B2 at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
You've gotten me fairly well-trained so far, Mr. Kotkin. All right, so are there any other items? I think Mayor Protem is ready to adjourn. So seeing none other, the council will adjourn to the next regular meeting Wednesday, December 5th, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM in the council chamber at City Hall, preceded by a closed session in the small conference room. Do we know what time that closed...
At 4:00 PM, Mayor.
At 4:00 PM, closed session. With that, we are adjourned at 8:20. Thank you.